All right, I have 6:34, so I think we'll go ahead and get started. We may have a couple more folks join us, and I'll let them in as we kind of go. But just wanted to say thank you to everybody that could join us tonight. My name is Dan Hocky. I'm the superintendent here at the Claremont County Board of Developmental Disabilities. I definitely want to wish you all a very happy holiday season. You know, it's, I know for many, it's been a challenge throughout the year. I want to just say, on behalf of all of us at the board, we're certainly thinking of all of you in terms of the, you know, the challenges you've all have faced as providers, family members, individuals served. It's just been a really trying year. I know we're all anxious to put 2020 behind us. And as we join, as we head into 2021, we have received the news. We've all been hearing through the media and through the news about vaccine and just the, you know, the vaccine development for COVID-19. And we've reached that point. Vaccine is becoming available. And so what we wanted to do tonight is just take a few minutes to kind of share with you all. And to, we're very appreciative to have Julianne Nesbit. I'll introduce her in just a minute here, our public health commissioner, to just share a little bit about information about the vaccine and answer questions. Because we certainly recognize that this is situations in which there probably are a lot of questions just related to kind of the vaccines. And we're just trying to help, try to get as much information out there as possible. Because what we're excited about is the fact that our
And my son.
Individuals who live in congregate settings in our county are eligible in the 1A category for vaccine. So with that, that could happen relatively soon. So what we want to do is to be able to provide information to all of you so that you have that information. So as you make that decision for yourself, or if you're a guardian making that decision for your loved one or a family member, you have as much information to be able to kind of make that, you know, try to put all those, all that information together and figure out what the next steps are for you in terms of vaccine. So, so I wanted to just say again, thank you for all of you to be able to join us tonight. Just a couple of housekeeping type of things. If you, if you could go on mute, so if you have the ability to mute, if you're on, I think if you're on your phone, that is star six, or if you're on your computer, there's a, there is a mute button down the left-hand corner of your screen. It just kind of helps with cutting down some of the background noise as Julianne presents. And, and we will certainly afford lots of opportunity to ask questions and get questions answered. Julianne does have a presentation for you all that will kind of get us started. I did want to also introduce Emily Chestnut. She is one of our board members and actually a vaccine ambassador for Claremont County. So we're appreciative for her to join us tonight as well.
Josh.
I will introduce Julianne, and then I'll turn it over to her. And she will do a presentation related to just the vaccine and kind of what's, what's happening on that front. To introduce Julianne, she is our, again, our health commissioner here in Claremont County. From the website, she began her role as the health commissioner for Claremont County Public Health in 2013, after serving as the assistant health commissioner for seven years. She received her undergraduate degree in environmental management from Ball State University and her master of public health from Wright State University. She began her career as a registered sanitarian and has worked in the public health field for 26 years. Ms. Nesbit is responsible for the overall operations of Claremont County Public Health and supervises, supervises the administration, nursing, water and waste, environmental health, and plumbing divisions. They have over 49 staff members and maybe a little bit more with contact tracers at this point. So, can't say enough of a thanks, just a preliminary thanks to Julianne, not only for joining us tonight, but just for all of her guidance throughout this, these last 10 months or how many ever months that we've been kind of battling this. She has been unbelievable. I don't know if she's had a day off in the 10 months, but she has just been so helpful to all of us. And so we want to thank her again for joining us tonight. So Julianne, I will turn it over to you and let you take it from here.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. So I did take Christmas Day off. I just wanted to put, put it on record, one day in the last, like, you know, 10 months. But I took Christmas Day off and I shut our entire operations down for one day. So just to give my staff one, one-day breather. Unfortunately, they don't get it for New Year's, like, we'll be working. So, but we are excited. We are, I think for us, you know, it has been a really long 10 months. So, and I know it has been for everybody with, with, you know, the, the social distancing, the isolation that's been going on, which certainly impacts everybody. I can tell you, you know, from, from our perspective, I think this is like, we can actually see that there's light at the end of the tunnel now. You know, it's not like super, super bright at this point because I still think we've got several months to go. My projection is I'm kind of telling people like six months. We got to get through like another kind of six months. So hopefully by summertime, we'll start to see some normalcy of things. And it may not take quite that full six months. But as we kind of talk tonight about vaccine and what we think kind of projections are going to be and availability to kind of greater public, obviously, we want to talk about your group here tonight. But I think, you know, there are others who are, who are also want to know, like, when maybe some of their other loved ones and family members may be able to get it. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. So I'm going to screen share. I do have a PowerPoint on it that I'm going to try to walk through, talk a little bit about, you know, vaccine development, different types of phases, some kind of, you know, questions and answers that I think will probably get to most of your things. And then we can just open it up for Q and A afterwards on that. So give me two seconds here to... Dan, can you let me screen share?
Let me get it. You should be, you should have it now. Can you grab it?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Um, so, all right. And once again, I'm looking at like three different screens. So I'm going to ask if you see, actually see my PowerPoint?
Yes, we do.
Perfect. All right, because I've got different things going on. So, so just to kind of talk a little bit about what we're going to discuss, I want to just start with kind of the basics of how, how vaccines are kind of developed. Because one of the questions that are going to come up about, you know, was the process rushed? And that's a, that's a big question because, you know, how does it normally take us two years or more to get vaccine? But we miraculously came up with this one in six months, or they're roundabouts and stuff. So I want to talk about how, how kind of vaccine manufacturers in general manufacture vaccine. It's actually a really pretty interesting process with it. You know, there are some vaccines that are set to a specific, you know, disease or virus, and it stays really stagnant in things like, you know, polio and measles and things that we've developed over, over several years. And then there's things like influenza where actually those viruses have a tendency to morph and change. So that the influenza vaccine can potentially be altered kind of from year to year, depending on what strains are circulating with that. And there's different technology used for different types of vaccine. So we're going to focus a little bit tonight on the messenger RNA technology because that is what's available in the first two vaccine products. There are two other products that are going to come onto the market soon. So the, basically, the way vaccine manufacturers do it, they kind of have these three phases. The reason it normally takes kind of a two-year process is they'll run phase one. They'll, they'll look at the research. They'll, they'll take some time. They'll, they may make changes. They may do things. They'll then start recruiting for their phase two. They'll do their phase two. So when we look at phase one is really about like, does the vaccine even work? Like, is it even kind of getting the response? Are there serious side effects on it? What's the dosing size going to be? You know, what is that kind of looking at? And a really kind of small population. They then take it out to kind of phase, that phase two, which is a bigger group, so hundreds of people on it. And they're really wanting to look at, you know, any type of side effects on it. And then really trying to look at how well your immune system builds up that response. And then, then they open it up to those phase three trials, which are thousands. And it's normally about 30,000 people in a phase three trial for a vaccine on it. And they want to basically know kind of, you know, at that point, like, are there differences in other, other groups? What are they kind of seeing with it? Again, they continue to look at the vaccine safety on it, the vaccine effectiveness. And then those kind of just, you know, those most common side effects with it. So how they were kind of able to ramp it up quicker is they overlapped some of their phases. So a lot of the manufacturers, you know, who have stepped up, they, there were a lot of investors in it, and they realized the urgency of really coming up with a vaccine, not just in the United States, but around the world. We are not the only country who is, is using different types of vaccines as we move forward through this pandemic. So what they were doing is, is when they initially started their phase one trials, they were already recruiting everybody for phase two. And there were lots of products initially, and you probably saw some of them kind of fall off as they realized like phase one doesn't work. We're not going to, we're not going to, you know, move forward with that research. And then, you know, when they immediately started their phase two, they were recruiting for phase three. The piece that we don't, that we probably aren't going to have with this vaccine is a lot of time they want to know. They study those kind of phase three participants for a while. They may be studied ongoing for, you know, another six months or so, depending on the vaccine and the illness, and maybe for another, you know, year, 18 months, and try to get some longevity data on, on kind of determining how long do we know that, that you're, it's going to last as far as, you know, a vaccine. So we have vaccines that last, you know, babies and we never get them again. We get vaccines that we get boosters every few years or so, you know, things like tetanus. And you can get boosters on, on pertussis and whooping cough too. And then there's vaccines that we get annually like influenza. So that is really the, the only piece that's kind of missing out of the research. And they will, they will continue to do that research. The importance is to get the vaccine out quickly. So that is why the FDA is going to approve it under an emergency use authorization, to go ahead and still use that product before that kind of final longevity piece is really looked at. But they did not skip any phases. They just really can, like, overlap them as quickly as they can to be able to get through them. And the FDA continued to be very rigid in their process. So we're going to talk a little bit about the, the two current types of vaccine that are on the market. Pfizer is, and they both use messenger RNA, and I'll explain that a little bit too. So Pfizer uses that ultra cold storage that you hear people about, like the deep freeze. It's a negative 80 to negative 60 Celsius temperature. It's, it's pretty cold with it. It is actually a two-dose, they're administered every 12 days. It is an intramuscular injection, so it's going to be a shot in the arm for most people on it. And then the Moderna vaccine requires kind of standard freezer shipping temperatures. It actually is shelf-stable for 30 days under refrigeration. So Pfizer, once it's thawed out, I only have five days. You have five days to use it or you lose it on it. So Moderna is a little bit easier to be able to handle just logistically, but we can handle either one in the county. Moderna is two doses 28 days apart. It is also an intramuscular injection on it. We're also anticipating two more products coming on early in 2021, which will open up more vaccine availability with that. AstraZeneca has a product, and Johnson &amp; Johnson has a product. Their product that they use, so again, I'm going to talk a little bit about messenger RNA. Theirs are a little bit different. They actually use a, a, a kind of like a dead cold virus to be able to put the vaccine into it versus kind of the messenger RNA envelope that's used in the other two products. All vaccines are 100% voluntary. Nobody is being forced to, to receive any vaccine on it. When we administer vaccine, we have to have consent either from the individual directly, if they're able to consent, or from a guardian, if they are unable to give consent themselves. So just to talk a little bit about how kind of the messenger RNA works on it, is they really, and I stole this from Pfizer because it's their, their thing, but it really talks about the messenger RNA kind of piece of it. And we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit because people have lots of questions about like, what's it going to do to my like genetic makeup and my DNA? It does nothing to it, but we'll, we'll get to that. So what they really do is they, they kind of had a genetic sequence for the viruses, this like kind of spike protein that they used to kind of synthesize and so kind of make up that, that messenger RNA sequence on it. And it really kind of instructs your cells to, to make that kind of spike protein on it. And then it's, it's kind of in a, it's in a little envelope that they put it in on it to be able to do it. So once, so it does enter a cell, but it does not go into the nucleus of the cell, which is, is again where, where DNA would necessarily be. It basically is kind of instructions about how kind of to tell your body to produce the viral protein, not the virus, but the protein itself on it, which will stimulate your immune system to kind of create a response in order to do that. So it's kind of how the system works. I won't go too technical into it. I have a little bit more information that kind of explains that in another slide coming up. So I put up here the ACIP proposed phase one vaccination groups. So ACIP is kind of a group, they're, they're nonprofit kind of group that's made up that determines priority for all vaccine and all vaccine recommendations. They actually come up with recommendations. So the feds can agree to go with that or not, and then states can agree to go with that or not. So, you know, obviously, we're in phase 1A, which is really direct healthcare personnel, long-term care facility residents. Your group has also been kind of put into that phase 1A because of, again, congregate type settings. And although you don't always, depending on where residents are at and group comes and stuff, you may not meet that true definition of a long-term care facility. You kind of fall in that, that same envelope. So they are in there. I am going to caution you on looking at phase 1B and 1C at this point because I think they're going to be a little bit different in Ohio. And part of that is phase 1B is such a huge portion of our population. We are not going to have enough vaccines. So they're probably going to do some further breakdowns of that. If you've heard the governor talk, he's, he's indicated that it'll be, you know, adults with, with some, you know, chronic health, older adults. And then it talked about school teachers. And I think there will be some additional definition of that as we continue to move forward. We're not there yet. We're not even actually planning for that phase quite yet. We're focusing on the, on our 1A population. So, you know, as far as kind of the vaccines and safety of it, I will tell you a lot of this, this information in my slides tonight came from, there's some really good documentation on kind of facts and myths on the Ohio Department of Health's website that kind of walks through several things. I didn't include everything. I thought I kind of picked what was most relevant and what I thought you all would have questions about. But certainly, I would encourage you to go look at some of those resources. We really want people to educate themselves about the vaccine and then make the best decision for, for themselves or for their loved ones in doing that. So, you know, as I had indicated, the development process kind of did several steps just as comparable with other vaccines, just really kind of condensed and overlapping of those phases on it. So, you know, what we're really seeing at this point from the, the two products that are out there is they are pretty safe. The reactions that we're seeing are actually very similar to what you would see with some other vaccines and potentially actually a little bit of a less reaction. So, and we'll talk a little bit. I'm sure people have some concerns because they've heard about a little bit of the anaphylactic reaction that people can have to, to a vaccine. And we'll get to that a little bit. So the, the first two vaccines that were granted the, the emergency use authorization, the Pfizer vaccine is about 95% effective. Moderna is about 94% effective, so very, very close on it. Again, both of these use the messenger RNA kind of technology. It has actually been around for decades to develop some other vaccines on it. They've used it, you know, on, and actually, I think my next slide covers some of that. Yeah. So kind of, again, talking about the process being rushed, there were really no shortcuts in the development process. Just again, squished and kind of layered with it. And we have been kind of, researchers have been looking at that mRNA technology for, for decades and for different types of vaccines on it. They have looked at it. So influenza is actually, the way flu vaccine is produced is a very old and archaic way of doing it. So they, they actually use like fertilized eggs of chickens. And that's why if you have an egg allergy, you may not be able to get a flu shot. And so they have actually been looking at it for influenza. They just haven't come out with, you know, necessarily approved or developed. They also looked at it for Zika virus and have also looked at it for rabies. And there's a couple other viral diseases that they've looked at it for. But really, there have been some advances that have allowed the vaccine to kind of develop, you know, very quickly and again, safe and kind of effective, you know, vaccines. So the question about it kind of altering the DNA because it's messenger RNA technology on it. So the, the messenger RNA actually never enters the nucleus of the cell, which is really where that DNA is. And again, so the, the description of it is it's basically like giving your body instructions on how to make that spike protein. And then your, your immune system's going to look at it and go, wait, that shouldn't be there. So we're going to go ahead and build up an immune response to it without actually making you sick and doing it. There may be some side effects. They're really pretty mild, but without making an individual really sick. And then it'll eventually cause you to kind of make those, it'll trigger that immune response and make those antibodies with it. So, all right. So questions about, and we get the same questions about flu every year. And I will have, people will swear, I, you know, I got the flu vaccine and I got the flu. And they think they came from the vaccine. Didn't come from the vaccine. Anytime we give a vaccine, it is never going to be effective immediately. Your body has to go through that immune response and has to develop those antibodies with it. So it does mean, and keeping in mind, this is a two-dose series on it. So Pfizer's every, you know, first dose, and then 21 days later, second dose. Moderna, 28 days on it. But it will take a few weeks for your body to build up that immunity on it. And they do, because both of these require two doses, you're not going to have that full immunity after the first dose. You're going to have a partial immunity, hopefully, that your system started to trigger. But you're not going to get to that 95% level until about a week or two after that second dose. So anytime during that period, right before, right after, up to probably, you know, six weeks after your first, somewhere in between there, and making sure you, you do have to get your second dose. Your second dose has to be the same exact vaccine as you received the first time. So you cannot mix Moderna and Pfizer with it. But afterwards, you will have that kind of 95% response. 95% for a vaccine is actually very good. Most are not 100% effective in every person. So, you know, you always have to keep in mind that there may be an individual who it does not generate the response. People who are on like immunosuppressant drugs for something or medications may not actually trigger as much of an antibody response to that because their, their system is intentionally being suppressed because of some chronic illness that they may have. So you just kind of have to keep in mind with that. It doesn't mean you're going to get it from the vaccine. There's actually no way to become sick from the vaccine. It's, or to get COVID-19 from the vaccine with it. But it does mean that you can still, still, you know, again, right before, right after, up until that kind of second dose, and in about a week or so afterwards, you can definitely still contract COVID. So side effects, you know, kind of the goal of all vaccines is to tell our immune systems to fight the virus. That we want to recognize the virus and we want it to fight it. And that process does cause, you know, some side effects. It's, it's, you know, so we're, we're going to get a similar response, although not as dramatic, to actually getting the virus or doing something. You're, you're, you may experience some, some, you know, side effects. They're still considered very, very minor compared to getting the disease on it. So it's going to be things like fatigue, headaches, soreness, you know, redness at the injection pain site on it. Not as standard with every single vaccine we give is, is you may have injection site pain where it's, it's a, it's a, you know, needle going into a muscle. So that may be there. You may have some joint pain. You may actually run a low-grade fever also. So a low grade would be considered normal, which is normally less than 100. Anything above that, we actually have a little bit of a concern about, but can definitely be normal with it. And it's really a sign that your body is building up. So the anaphylactic reactions, I want to talk about a little bit. So that's where we have severe response to something where it's, you know, it's either causing them to not be able to breathe properly, racing heart, concerned with that. So there are a couple instances with the Pfizer vaccine with that occurring. So it is not actually the vaccine itself. More than likely, there is an ingredient within the vaccine that the individual is having an allergic response to. When we administer vaccine, and actually, all COVID-19 vaccine providers are required to have epinephrine on hand to be able to administer that very quickly, if need be, you know, to be able to kind of monitor an individual. And then, you know, obviously, if we would reach a point that we're administering epinephrine, we want you to actually go to the emergency room and be checked out, just to double check that everything is okay at that point. Moderna, I have read of one individual, though I was aware of just nationally, not anyone locally, that did have a reaction to it. However, that was an individual who has various, who has had very previous reactions to injection medication, shellfish, many other things on it. It was actually a physician who carries his own EpiPen and administered to himself, but then knew he needed to go to the emergency room and get, get checked out. So, you know, there is always that, that possibility. But we do carry medications to ensure, and anybody who's registered as a COVID-19 provider, whether it's going to be public health, or eventually it'll be out to other pharmacies and other places with that, or, you know, through our hospitals, wherever, they all carry those medications. It's a requirement that they have them to be able to deal with an anaphylactic reaction. If you do receive, we will, well, actually, let me, let me jump to my next slide. I get ahead of myself here because it's who should not receive it. So there may be individuals who should not receive the vaccine. So if a person has ever had a severe allergic reaction to any of the ingredients in the vaccine, so the, the vaccine safety sheets are actually available to everyone who gets vaccinated, whether we have them in, we have to either provide you a URL to a website or we normally keep paper copies on site if somebody wants to read them. You can read the ingredients that are in both products. So, you know, we would encourage people to take a look at that if they have ever had a real allergic reaction to something. We want to make sure they're kind of taking a look at that to see. So if you do have allergic reactions to things, it doesn't mean that you cannot get the vaccine. So, you know, if you're allergic to bee stings, you can still get the vaccine on it. What we're likely going to do is if you've ever had any type of anaphylactic reaction is we're going to extend your wait time. So anytime you get administered a vaccine, you should wait about 15 minutes just to make sure there's no reactions. For any individual who's ever had an anaphylactic reaction, we want to monitor them for 30 minutes to ensure they're not going to have any issues with it. So really, all we're looking for when we say you can't get it is if you've had a severe reaction to one of the components of the vaccine. If you've tested positive for COVID-19 in the last 14 days, we will not vaccinate on it. You need to wait until you're out of your isolation period. So we would not vaccinate an individual who tests positive. Additionally, anyone who should be under quarantine because they've been in close contact with anyone that's tested positive in the last 14 days on it. We want to wait until they're out of their quarantine period, and then we'll be able to vaccinate. Certainly, if anybody has symptoms of COVID-19, so if the day of clinic we're administering and you're running high temp or doing something, we are not going to vaccinate you that day if you're symptomatic. We're going to wait until, until that ceases and is over. It is not recommended that you receive this vaccine within 14 days of any other vaccine. It's not because it causes any problem. It's because they have no research on it being co-administered with other vaccines. So again, because, because we tried to do things quickly, we didn't necessarily do things like, you know, test with, if you give it simultaneously with flu. A lot of that research, I think, will continue to be ongoing. So that may be something in the future we'll, we'll kind of look at with it. But for right now, it's not recommended that you receive any vaccine 14 days prior to or after receiving the COVID-19 vaccine on it. And then the last one, which is, I'm sorry, but it's big words. But if you've received the monoclonal antibodies or convalescent plasma. So if you don't know what that is, that's okay. It means you probably didn't get it. So the antibodies or the, or the convalescent plasma is what is actually given to confirmed COVID-19 patients to, to be able to kind of treat that. So they are given plasma from other patients who have survived COVID-19 in order to help them fight COVID-19. And again, it doesn't mean that they can't be vaccinated. We just don't want to vaccinate them within 90 days of them receiving that, so they can get vaccinated at a later date. Again, it's just because we don't have research with that interaction. And we want to make sure if we're giving a vaccine, we want to try to give somebody the best bet of, of, you know, building that immune response to it. So questions come up a lot about, you know, should individuals who have had COVID-19 get vaccinated? We do encourage people to go ahead and get vaccinated, even if they've had COVID-19. At this point, we do know, once you have had it, you do have immunity for up to, kind of, we know up to three months. They're actually kind of speculating, and there's some research to indicate you may have some immunity up to about six months from it. But we don't know how long it lasts. There are documented cases of reinfection. We have documented cases of reinfection in individuals and, and cases that we've had in Claremont County. So somebody that, that was COVID-19 positive, maybe early on, March and April, who have actually become reinfected in the fall with it. So we do want to encourage people to go ahead and get vaccinated. You know, if, if we get, there are times if we have very, very limited vaccine, what we tell individuals is if you have to prioritize people, and we do, we even have to prioritize our, our own people. Like, if you have to prioritize, you want to take somebody who's had COVID positive and just bump them to the bottom of your list. And it's only because they have some natural immunity already. So you want to try And it's only because they have some natural immunity already. So you want to try to get those other people first on it. But if, if we've got plenty of vaccine, we would still highly encourage a person to go ahead and get vaccinated, even if they've had COVID-19. Questions come up about if you get the vaccine, am I going to test positive for COVID-19 in the future? And that can kind of be a particular concern, depending on what tests are being used in certain facilities. You know, if you do have somebody in a, in a true long-term care setting on it, they, they're required to do kind of weekly testing and stuff. So the current vaccines won't cause you to test positive on a viral test, which is, we also call it an RNA test or a PCR test. That's like the gold standard of COVID-19 testing, and the vaccine will not cause you to test positive on that. If you do, it kind of develop that immune response with the vaccination, which is our goal on it. There is a possibility that's with some of the antibody tests. So there's, there's kind of three types of tests. There's the, the PCR, the RNA, that kind of gold standard test. Which normally takes about 24 hours, 24 to 48 hours to get back from a lab. There is rapid antigen tests, which you get very quickly. They're really meant to be diagnostic tests. And then the antibody tests show you that you have had past infection at some point. Doesn't mean that you're necessarily ill now, doesn't test for any type of, of current illness. But it will say, you know, you could get an antibody test and it, it means you had COVID three months ago. So some of the antibody tests may be triggered by the vaccine. More information to come on that. Antibody tests are not really very common unless a doctor is trying to look to, to know, like if you've had some type of past infection or something. The most common tests are the PCR test or, or an antigen test that's being done. I did throw in the, the pregnant breastfeeding question because there are, or you may have, you know, staff or employees, individuals who may be pregnant or breastfeeding on it. And, and so people who are pregnant and breastfeeding may choose to, to, to get vaccinated. The American College of Obstetrics and Gynecologists do recommend, do not, or recommends that COVID-19 vaccines are not withheld from individuals. But there has been no specific research on those individuals. So they did not take a group of pregnant women and do research specifically on them. So really what the recommendations are, is they consult with their physician. And then if they choose to get vaccinated, we will still vaccinate them on it. It's really their choice at that point. And same with breastfeeding women. It's just, there's no specific information if they want to point to, to, you know, researcher safety in that specific group. So lots of resources for more information. I sent Dan the slides before this, so he can distribute those out to anybody who would like them. And it's got lots of resources for people to kind of look at things. The CDC information, Ohio's information, the FDA information on kind of, you know, their emergency preparedness and just coronavirus diseases in general. And then I actually included both the, the Pfizer fact sheet for recipients and caregivers and the Moderna fact sheet. So that's typically what you would receive if you would get the vaccine. Those are the fact sheets that are going to have the ingredient list in it. It'll also walk you through the exact. You know. Symptoms that may occur after the vaccine, specific to each one of those. I kind of gave a general overview, but it will give very specific details on those vaccines. Right now, as Claremont County Public Health, right now, all I have is Moderna. People will not get to pick and choose their vaccine. We just don't have that capability. It is so limited right now. You know, we, we've got a population of about 205, 6,000 at this point. I've received 200 doses in my first week and about 400 this week. And that is primarily going out to our EMS providers at this point and a few other entities. So very limited quantities right now. We're getting it in hundreds, not in thousands. So we will kind of continue to work through, I think we will be working on the priority 1A population, probably through the majority of January, possibly even into February, depending on how much vaccine we get. And really kind of the order we take things in at this point is when people are kind of ready and systems are ready for us. Because it takes a lot of logistics and coordination. So when, when, you know, Dan kind of works with groups and we decide, okay, we're kind of ready to go. We've got things figured out, paperwork, consent forms and everything. We'll start planning on, on how that's going to look specifically and how some of the populations would, would look at being vaccinated on it. So ideally, some of them can come into, people can come into our clinic. We will be running clinics. We will be doing some outstation clinics on it. We will be going to some actual locations to be able to do some individuals also. So kind of lots of options out there. So that was the really quick course on vaccine and what we know right now. So I will just open it up to questions at this point.
Hey, we got a question for you.
Sure.
Ask her, Mom.
Yeah, I'm my daughter's caretaker. Do I need to get the shot too, if she goes back to work at the workshop or no?
So, Dan, I don't know.
So, so, and, so to describe the first set of doses that will go out. This is for folks who live in congregate care settings or congregate settings. So we're, how we're kind of defining that are at least two or more individuals with developmental disabilities that live with a, that live together and get around the clock supports. So that's at least with two living together. Most will be four, some even larger than that. So I think in your circumstance, the way you're describing it is you all live together, but you're a family, you're like in a family unit.
Yeah, it's her daughter.
My daughter.
Yeah. So in that situation, you, you guys would not fit into the 1A category, but you would fit into a different category. So either probably into the 1C or why, I think in that realm. Cause the first phase is to really get to the congregate care settings, just because of the nature seen in different settings like nursing homes where it's a lot more prevalent. So does that answer your question? Does that help?
It helps, but I think we just, Mom just said it wrong. What, what they're doing is they're trying to send Amy back to work and to Goodwill. And somebody said that she had to have the shot before she went to, to go to work.
Like we did with the, with the. I always get the flu shot because she works, you know, but it's just me and her.
Right. And they said for Amy to go to work that she had to have the shot, somebody said. She, Mom's just wondering if.
Somebody else told me that, you know, you all didn't, but I just wondered about that.
So that's not those, that wouldn't be contingent on returning, but it just depends on kind of the, the level of risk for the person to return to a setting like a day program. And that's, that's something you could talk with your team about to kind of.
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
We wanted to know. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks for being here tonight.
No problem.
Thank you. Dan, this is Jenny Grossman, and I'm going to kind of piggyback on that. I have the two boys, Kyle and Nate. They're both, I'm their guardian. They're with me and under, you know, 24 hour care, all of your guidelines. So because I have two of them, but they're in my home, does that put us in this first group? Because I have two, and this is basically, I guess you could say their facility. It's not run like that, obviously. It's their home, but.
But you're getting around the clock supports?
Yes. I provide Kyle around the clock support and then Nathan has nursing hours that vary by the day. He has a trach, so he's very high risk.
But are you acting in the role of like a, I hate to ask a, but like.
Yes, a paid provider. Yes. I am Kyle's independent provider through DODD. So that is official.
Yeah, I, I do think that we are looking at that as a, as a 1A group. So if I'm speaking correctly, I'm going to turn to like the Sharon and the Kims, but I do believe that that would qualify.
Yeah, I put Jenny on the list.
Okay.
Yeah, you're the one that told me to attend this.
Yeah.
So that's. Look at that. So, and it has to, because of the fact that you have two and you're acting in that role.
Okay, so would I, and this is just for me, would I get the vaccine at that time too? Or would I go back to just the general population?
Because you're acting in the role as a paid provider, you would, you would qualify as someone eligible.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Now, I have, I have a son that we live in a family situation, but he works at Goodwill also. And he has a pacemaker. Should he wait? He hasn't been at work here lately because he's been sick, but should I wait till he gets the vaccine before he goes back to work?
Well, that's the, that's, that's really that, that's that team process. So there's a whole kind of risk benefit assessment that your SSA should be able to work with you guys on to, to really walk through that. And to really take a look at what's, what's in, what's in the best interest of the individual. Because, you know, that's, that's, that's weighing out those risks versus the benefits of returning. But ultimately, it is kind of a subjective thing. You have to kind of work through that and determine, you know, is it better to wait? Is it better for, you know, because a lot of things come into play related to the social aspects, kind of the, the mental health aspects for folks. So there's a lot that plays into this. But what I would encourage in those situations is to revisit that with your team, go back and take a look at that. Kind of work through that risk benefit analysis. And then from there kind of making that, making that call. Does that help, Judy?
Yes. Yeah, I would, I guess I would also add, Dan, for those individuals who may not fall into this, you know, tier 1A immediately on it. I, I don't think we are looking at, you know, it's, it's, I, I think you're probably looking at months before we might get to, you know, your, your group at that point, you know, where you may fall into, to a different tiered category. So I, I know it's difficult. Everybody's kind of, you know, wanting it as soon as we can, but with such limited numbers, we do have to tier people. I do want to encourage people, like I, I don't think that this is, you know, I, I really do think probably by summer, we're going to be pretty decent. Where we've been told, I'm actually part of several kind of state work groups and, and regional work groups. We've been told that probably by February, vaccine supply will be pretty decent. And they're going to be start probably opening up to other providers. And we're actually very hopeful of that. And when it does get opened up to other providers, and if, if you're eligible to, to, to go to those providers, please do that. We, we as public health are really, we, we fill the gaps. We, we are not meant to be the sole providers of everything in the county. We fill those gaps. And so initially, when vaccine is very restricted and this happened with H1N1 also, it's given to us because we, we are a government entity. We do have, you know, we, we have the control of it to ensure during these really restricted times that it is appropriately given out. When it starts to open up, we are aware that several of the, the large pharmacies are working on contracts with the federal government. You may have read that Kroger's is, has a large contract agreement. You're going to have the same with your CBS. You know, CBS and Walgreens are already doing the long-term care residents in the nursing homes. I would anticipate they've hired, you know, they have a huge infrastructure they've put together to be able to do that. So I can't imagine that's just going to go away after the long-term care is done. They're going to look at using those resources elsewhere to do that. We've been told that Ohio is going to use the National Guard to assist with, you know, potentially vaccination. So there may be some like large scale vaccination clinics that we're going to be able to do. So, you know, people who, who may not hit this phase one category, just, you know, sit tight for a couple, you know, another probably month or two to kind of see where we're at with things. I think more vaccine, again, more products come online, a lot more vaccine being pushed out. I think January is going to be really tight. It's probably going to be pretty slim. You know, but I think once we get into February, March, April, things are going to look really pretty good. And they will open up to other providers. So we do have about, I'm aware, and they're, they're constantly enrolling, enrolling more providers at the state level. But I'm aware we have about 17 other entities that are going to be, or as of right now, that will be registered COVID-19 providers in our county. So there will be other resources to that. And we do encourage everybody to use whatever resource is best for you to access. Certainly doesn't have to be public health.
I'm getting ready to have surgery myself for 14th, and then I have to go into rehab. So I talked to them yesterday and all of them has had their shots. They're getting their second one on the 11th. And she said, what I would do is contact CBS and they would probably come into the facility and give me my shot. So that's what I'm hoping.
Yeah. So the, the pharmacies that are doing the long-term care are actually planning to go into the facilities at least three times. Because they do realize they're going to miss people on some of those. So, you know, you may, may have different people in at different times. So it'll really depend on their scheduling. We at the local level have nothing to do with that scheduling because that's a federal program. I mean, we're aware it's happening. It's ongoing with things, but we have no information on when facilities are getting scheduled or anything that's happening with them.
Yeah. But that is CBS doing the one where I'm going over East Gate.
What other questions do folks have that maybe were on your list of things to?
Hi, hi, Dan. This is Renee. I actually have a question. I work in school age and we do have two girls that live in a congregate setting. One is 14 and one is seven. Would they be eligible for the COVID vaccines since they're under the age of 16?
Yes. Right now, Moderna does not permit under the age of 18. Pfizer does permit 16 on it. So at this point, they would not be eligible to do it. So I do, there are ongoing studies happening with children that I do think at some point vaccine manufacturers will go back and provide additional information to the FDA that will allow them to open it up. I mean, the, the good thing is, is with children is they actually don't get it as much as adults do. And they actually don't spread it as much as adults do. They don't socially distance. So I'm not saying they don't spread it. They do. Cause children do not socially distance. But, you know, really what we have seen is you don't see that, that kind of spread happening near as much in, in children. So at this time, they would not be, again, I would say, kind of sit tight though. And, and again, that may be opened up at a later date.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Renee. That's a good question.
One thing I did not have in my slides that does come up is there is question regarding cost occasionally with it. So a COVID-19 provider, so the vaccine is free. It is provided by the federal government. So we, no one can charge you for the vaccine at all. They can charge you for the administration fee to, to give the vaccine. Right now, as public health, as long as we get funding from the federal government to cover our costs, we will, we will not be charging an administration fee because honestly, it's, the insurance billing is a pain in the butt to do. So we, we will do our best to not have to do that. It slows our process down. And we've really been very candid with the governor in the state about like, if that's what you want us to do, we can do it. I have the full capabilities of doing it, but it drastically slows down my process. If we have to collect insurance information and then do billing on the backend. So, um, we will not, but that does not mean other providers won't, but there should never be any out of pocket costs. So insurance will cover it. If you do not have insurance, you're uninsured. There is actually a federal pot of money in a program to be able to cover that. So at no point should anyone ever be paying out of pocket for either, either any type or either those of vaccine.
Other questions that folk, that have come up as you've been kind of processing this or have heard maybe that we can maybe help with?
Dan, I don't so much have a question. I just wanted to, as the totally unofficial vaccine ambassador. I think science is so important and I've been actually following very closely. I am a phase one trial participant for the Pfizer study. I just had my six month follow-up this week from my second dose. I just think that it's so important that we do our research and engage. And I've been so impressed with the Pfizer trial. I actually have a 14-year-old son who's in the, the teen participant now. So hopefully we can, you know, come together and get past because it's been a heck of a year. But as being part of the Pfizer trial, I've done other vaccine trials through the Gamble program, which was run out of Cincinnati Children's Hospital, and they are very professional. They, Pfizer and the Gamble program have both been very good about explaining, you know, the background and how the mRNA works. And I felt very comfortable through that process the whole time. Not officially been unblinded because it's so new. They will unblind me this week, they said, but it, you know, they're still kind of working through that. I do think I got the real one because I had a, I had a response to the second. But it was, it was short and, and body aches and then gone. It was almost like a light switch. Like it flipped on for like 12 hours and flipped off. And way better than the possibility of getting sick or, you know, heaven forbid, making it to a hospital or ventilator. So hopefully we can all get the vaccine and be patient as Julianne and Dan have been saying about how this process works. Cause there's a ton of logistics to go with it, but there's also a lot of hope.
So Julianne, if a person was in clinical trial studies, do they, I mean, and really, a lot of them don't know whether you got the placebo or the vaccination. Should they go ahead and get the vaccination?
I mean, Not not until they're not until their study has been unblinded, like you you kind of indicated. So because that that research is still ongoing, if they would get the vaccine before they're kind of at the end of their their time for the research project, it could invalidate their results. So really, they they want to kind of sit tight and, you know, make sure that every that they're done with, you know, when they're done, they will be told what they've been given. And then certainly, if they haven't been given it, then they need to be vaccinated at that point. Anyone who has given it as part of the study is already going to have that vaccine. And so they would have already had that response.
The Pfizer has been very good about, you know, telling us what when we'll get it. Essentially, Pfizer says we'll get it either, like if my employer were to call and say I was a 1A to give it now, I could call Pfizer and say, did I get the placebo or the real? And then Pfizer at least has asked that. If I do get offered it somewhere else, I actually come to Pfizer to get it so they can keep us in the trial. So I wouldn't, they wouldn't want me to flip over and get Moderna if that's what my employer was offering. But they'll give it to us either when our time comes up or after six months after they will unblind us, which which I think is very fair. So.
Thank you very much, Emily, for sharing that. That was, that's very helpful to kind of get a firsthand experience to share with the group. And that's that's good, good information for sure. So appreciate it.
A lot of our EMS providers did receive Moderna. They they actually picked up yesterday and did vaccinated a large number of our EMS providers. And at this point, we've heard of little to no reactions from anything, you know, very minor, nothing, nothing. You know, kind of major going on with anything. Nobody had any any major adverse reactions to anything. And and they will continue to vaccinate kind of through this week. And again, kind of other providers that'll that'll be coming on. So here, all all hearing really good things at this point, so.
Other questions folks might have?
Yes, Dan, this is Alan Cameron. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm with and for Julianne too. I'm with Residential Concepts. We're a provider in Claremont County with group homes. We have many individuals that are over 65. And I guess our question is, we've completed the survey with CCPH online. I've talked to Carol Kistner and our local pharmacy as well. But we're not getting any idea of a timeline for the vaccinations. We are concerned where are we on the list per se? I don't, I haven't seen any consent forms on the website yet. I know with influenza that were on the website. What what is the status for agencies like ours?
Yeah, so Alan, one, I want to say like, good to meet you because we we've worked with you for for years.
Yes, that's true.
Nice to find you.
They wonder whether they're in their second box.
Carol, Carol definitely works with you guys. Good shots. So um, I I the issue really is at this point, it's going to be vaccine availability. So I I don't have a timeline on when we, so first of all, we're trying to, you know, back to what numbers look like. And I'm
Just go down to participants down there.
They were ones that
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I was trying to mute.
Our son is the
You can unmute it.
That plays for
Sorry.
Yeah, I was singing to you.
Yeah, so so Alan, I don't, you know, I don't have a specific, I'm not sure what your numbers are. Right now, it's just really, really limited vaccine availability. So, you know, I think once we figure out, we do have, so we do have a consent form available. My problem right now is we learned today that our consent form doesn't match which what match what is in our electronic health records. So we need to get those merged, which we hope to get done hopefully tomorrow or the next day on it as we kind of move forward with it. So, you know, and and we can definitely get get kind of forms out to you as far as registration. But give me a day or two. So I would anticipate maybe by sometime next week, we can kind of make those available to you. I don't know that we're going to, so we're we're struggling right now. I will tell you one of our biggest struggles is everybody who is calling us who is not in phase 1A. I I spent more time on the phone today telling people they're not in phase 1A that I haven't even had time to get to people that are in phase 1A to return from the mall. So, you know, as I I'm going to be a little bit hesitant about maybe just putting that out on our on our website. We may just provide it to individuals as we go. So if you're going to do kind of like a closed pod, which is what we do with residential nurse that comes out and comes and a clerical staff that comes to you. And that's how we would anticipate probably doing it again. What, you know, we can provide you that information and stuff. I'm hesitant to just put the forms up on our website because I'm going to have everybody trying to fill them out, submit them. Like, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't doesn't get you anywhere. Additionally, people that may actually just be coming in and coming through our routine clinic will not use those paper forms. They will, we actually have a system that we're working on putting in place that we will send a link to. People can register for their appointment. It will do everything electronically, pre-register them, get everything ready to go to to be able to come into our clinic. And we are paperless in our clinic. So we're just kind of kind of waiting to see some of the logistics. You know, we've been working with with Dan and some of the crew at DD to try to kind of figure out. We we want to kind of come up with a game plan for all of DD and how that might look. So I think, you know, maybe here, probably within the next week, you may hear a little bit more from us about how we may move forward with some of it.
Okay, thank, thank you. I I know we're, we've contacted the guardians and family members about the two vaccines, providing information, resources. So they are on board, most of them. Some have a couple other questions. But as you know, with the influenza vaccinations, we had the forms, we get them to the guardians, parents, we have them back. We have all of our ducks in a row ready to go. And I didn't know what the turnaround time would be, you know, if you have 600 vaccines this week and we're on to to get them. What, how how soon, and and we like to be prepared, you know?
So I I would, yeah, I think we would be looking at about a week turnaround time. So I mean, by the time we say we think we think we're going to have it. So I normally know a week in advance what I'm getting, well, not quite a week in advance.
Okay.
I normally getting, you know, sometimes towards the end of the week, getting what I might get the following week on it. So here's my thing, if I would go strictly off of those allocations, I might be able to plan a little bit quicker. Moderna, communication coming from Moderna, though, unfortunately, is a little lacking when it comes to our shipments. So Pfizer is very, very precise. They tell you exactly when it's shipping, when it's going to arrive to you, what's going to happen. You get shipment notifications. Moderna, it just kind of shows up on your doorstep. Last week, we were told we would get shipment on Monday. We didn't get shipment Monday. We were told we we were not on the list for Tuesday. We were told it was going to be Wednesday. I had things scheduled for Wednesday with our EMS. I had to cancel them. And then low and behold, Tuesday afternoon, it shows up on our doorstep. So I'm really at the point with Moderna, like until I have it in my hands, I don't really want to plan for the following week. I want to make sure I know I have those doses available. As more starts to come out, it makes planning easier and I'm not so restricted with that. So I I would anticipate, though, and and I don't know if, you know, about a week's turnaround time. So once we kind of know, like, okay, you're going to come up, we're going to be picking you up. We would be getting forms out to you and information. So if you could do about a week with that, is that doable?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Our guardians and family members are excellent, and we use telecommunications. So I don't see foresee a problem with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm really glad you brought that up, Alan, because that's something that we've been trying to figure out as well. It's just the logistics of, because I even talked to Julianne earlier today about the fact that we recognize guardians won't necessarily be at clinics. They'll be, you know, so we sort of have to get some of that all done ahead of time. And so those are, those are logistical issues that we're working with on on our end too. And I know you guys, you know, are Johnny on the spot with that kind of thing. So so it's a situation that we'll just need to be prepared to have those forms, get them out, get them back, have them ready. So as to Julianne's point, when it's time to roll, it's time to roll. And we've got everything, you know, all kind of ready to put out. Because, you know, the the logistics of this are quite daunting in the sense of you've got the the two vaccine kind of process here. So you, you know, if we set up some clinics or do some things of that sort, you got to repeat that in 20. I think it's the 28 day cycle with Moderna or 20. So it's a situation, we got to be prepared for that as well. So so there's a lot of logistics. And we want to get the most precise number back to Julianne so that, you know, she's got an idea of kind of what she's needing for our population as well. So that's a project that Sharon and Kim and those on the line here, some others on the line have been working on as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Is one vaccine better than the other? So they both are about the same.
Yeah, so at this point, they're they're really, really close. You know, you're at a 94, 95% on it. So there's, I haven't, so the two products coming out, the AstraZeneca and the Johnson and Johnson, and I'm going to forget which one is 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 which. One of them, they went back and did some additional studies because they did like a full dose the first time and the second time. And they had lower, lower efficacy with it. And then they realized if they did a half dose during the first, well, they switched and they did a half dose and then a full dose. And then they were getting up to about 90%. However, they had to combine all that research together. So it looks like their efficacy is only about 70%. So they are continuing to do some additional trials and 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 studies with it. Honestly, a vaccine, anything above 90% is is really, really good for a vaccine on it. You know, we will get some that are up to like 98% or so is about the highest you'll see with it. But then you'll see others that aren't, you know, quite that high. It just depends on on, you know, the type of vaccine. And again, with things like influenza, it depends on which strains are in that vaccine for the year. So we watch the southern hemisphere when they're in winter to see what strains are circulating. So we put them in our vaccine for the next winter. And then they watch us as we kind of, you know, because influenza is a seasonal type thing with it. And it's not always right. We, you know, scientists don't always get it right. There are normally about four strains in it, and and sometimes you can get a strain that wasn't in the vaccine. So even though you you got the vaccine, it just didn't work on that strain.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Dan. Hey, Dan, this is Karima Thomas, and I was wondering how providers and individuals will be notified when vaccine is available for them?
Yeah, so that's that's going to be the logistics. So what we're going to be doing is working with Julianne. So once we have identified, you know, our goal is to get get out to all the providers and individuals, get a sense for who is interested in taking the vaccine, getting all those consent forms signed out, signed and back. So then we have a logistics list of who we know is interested in taking the vaccine. That can then get to Julianne. And then at that point, it's a matter of trying to figure out, how do we get? Because one of the challenges we're going to face is Julianne's crew can't, you know, they're not going to be able to get out to every, you know, four bed group home in the county. So we're, what we're going to have to look at is a way that we can have a central location, maybe that we can have folks come to to be able to get get administered the vaccine. We're still trying to work through those logistics. So the idea would be would we we would, once we've got that list, we would get with Julianne, we set a date, and then we communicate that out to all the individuals, providers, so they know that it's coming on this date, be here on this date. Or it, we're coming to you on this date, depending on the on the logistics of that. So does that make sense? So we're going to be working very closely once we've got that list, kind of working out all those details and communicating that out to everybody so that they know kind of when when they can expect to receive it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I think we're right at about an hour or so, a little over an hour. So I I definitely want to be respectful of folks' time, but I also want to make sure we're answering everybody's questions. So so maybe open up for another chance for some final questions here.
Dan, this is Jenny again. So I have an SSA and there's Kim and there's Sharon, and I know everybody in your office anyway. So when it's our turn, you'll just email me and let me know logistically where I need to take them.
Yes, like I said, yeah, we'll we'll have details out to you all in terms of either via email, via telephone calls, you know. Just making sure you know that this is, this is one you can expect. And, you know, our, like I said, our goal is to maybe it's our best goal is to try to figure out some kind of clinic that we can try to put together that, you know, that works for everybody. Because one of the things is the challenge is trying to figure out, you know, all the different aspects of getting folks there, social distancing, all the things that kind of come into that. But that's, that's
Right, and Nathan is a higher risk, so I don't take him anywhere. So I
Yeah, and those are things we want to process too, to figure out, you know, and work out the details with with you on that. So.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to log off so I can go do my thing. This has been very helpful, and thank you, Kim, for telling me to log on. You always take care of me.
It's good to have you. So thank you, Jenny.
Bye.
And I think if it's okay, Julianne, you know, we have been recording, so I can put this on our website. And then is it okay to put your slides on there too? Or would you just, is that okay? Okay, great. And the lovely three pages of notes that I slopped down, I might try to decipher those two and add those in too. So I'll try to get that done tomorrow.
Yeah, so we will definitely have Julianne PowerPoint available so that folks can take a look at that. And we can get, and if it's something that you would like sent directly to you, I think we will work through Lisa on that. So if you just either call Lisa or email Lisa, she can get that sent off to you as well. So you've got the that detailed information that you can take a look at a little bit more in detail. Well, I definitely just want to, I want to say thank you again to all of you for being able to. Well, thanks to Julianne for being available tonight to be able to share with us, answer questions, share more information about the vaccine. Thanks to everybody that logged on tonight. Really appreciate that. I cannot say enough thanks to the providers who are on the line here and the family members who are dealing with this on a day by minute by minute basis. We cannot thank you all enough for all that you're doing for the people that we serve here in Claremont County. It is truly, truly appreciated. So we will definitely continue to work on this. I I definitely hear the the urgency. It is an urgent matter. This is to Alan's point. This is a situation in which, you know, it's it's, you know, we've certainly seen it, you know, pop up more and more in the individual populations that we're serving, some having to be hospitalized. It is a, it is a desperate situation for many, many folks. And so we recognize that urgency. As Julianne mentioned, this is sort of the light at the end of the tunnel, but we still have a long road to go here. And so we recognize that we want to do everything we can to partner with you, all of you, to to make that happen as quickly as possible. So so thank you to all of you again. 2020 is going to be behind us. Let's look to a better 2021. If there's ever anything that we can answer for you, please, please. And we'll make sure we get your questions answered as best we can. So thank you all and have a good evening and happy new year.
Happy new year, Dan.
All right, Rocky, you take care of yourself, sir.
Okay, buddy.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, Lisa.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.